This is a first quorum call of the city council. It is 10:13. We have four members present. The council members in the building could please find their way to the council chambers. It would be appreciated in order that we may start the meeting. This is a first quorum call. We have ten members present. Four members present. We need six of you to make it ten. Good morning. This is a meeting of the city council of the city of Los Angeles this Tuesday, the 30th of January 2001. I'm Councilman Rudy Savornich Jr., Assistant Council President Pro Tem, serving as presiding officer today due to the absence of Council President John Ferraro and Council President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter, who are both excused. This council meeting can be heard live via audio phone in the city of Los Angeles, and we are currently being viewed on LA City View Channel 35. The council meeting will be repeated this evening at 7:30, and all council meetings for the week will be played this upcoming Sunday, starting at 10 a.m. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bernstein, Chick, Fury, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Miss Causi, Pacheco, Padilla, Really, Thomas, Savornich, Wax, Holters, Faro, ten members present, and in court, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The first order of business this morning, we have an introduction presentation by one of our colleagues, so the chair would like to recognize Councilwoman Rita Walters. Councilwoman? Councilwoman?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce two state officials from Japan who have come to observe our council in action today and to gain information on our process of citizen participation in government. Both are from the Mie Prefectural Government in Japan. Mr. Masatoshi Inoue, come forward, yes. He is the Associate Director of the Procedures Division for the Prefectural Assembly Secretariat in the Mie Prefectural Government. The second person with us is Mr. Toshahiko Fujiwara, who is the Associate Director, yes, okay, who is the Associate Director of the Administrative Research Division of the Prefectural Assembly Secretariat in the Mie Prefectural Government. Their interpreter is Mr. Mack Ito. He's the interpreter for the group. The City of Los Angeles welcomes all three of you. They are going to have an opportunity to meet with various of our city staff, people from CLA's office and other offices, to get some questions answered about how we go about this process of involving the public in our deliberations. And I'm, thank you very much again for coming, and we're honored with your presence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and again, a welcome to our guests this morning. Thank you for being with us. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Approval over the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commentary resolutions for approval?
Without objection, those are approved also.
Okay. Before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items for continuation. Item number three, a request by Council District 11 to continue that matter till February 13th.
Is there any objection to continuing this item until that date's certain? Okay, seeing no objection, that will be the order.
Item number 25, a request from Council District 6 to continue this matter till March 2nd. Item 25.
Is there any objection to continuing item number 25 until March 6th?
March 2nd.
March 2nd, I apologize. Seeing no objection, that'll be the order.
Item number 26, also a request from Council District 6 to continue this matter till February 6th. That's item 26.
Any objection to that? Okay, so ordered.
Item number 27, a request that that matter be received and filed on the advice of the Los Angeles Housing Department and Council District 8.
Okay, without objection, we will receive and file that item.
Item number 28, a request from Council District 1 to withdraw from the agenda, refer back to Los Angeles Housing Department REITs section. Item number 28.
Is there any objection to that? Seeing no objection, that'll be the order on that item.
On the regular agenda is item number four, is a commission appointment, is the appointment of David Almerez to the Los Angeles Industrial Development Authority.
Very good. Mr. Almerez, welcome. You could please be seated. Is there any council member that wishes to speak prior to this appointment being considered? The Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Mr. Chairmembers of the council, I basically, Mr. Almerez appeared before our committee and find him qualified for the position which he is seeking, and the committee does recommend his appointment. In committee, I pointed out to, I guess it was Mr. Holden, that right now, this particular authority has two members from Council District 11, two members from Council District 5, one member from Council District 12, and two members from Council District 4. And as people talk about succession, those are strong motivations for what I call "the other city" to support succession, because the only way it seems that the inner city would get some representation on these kinds of boards would be if part of the city was to leave us. And, huh? Well, one from 12, two from 11, two from 5, and one from 4. And I think it's, well, the point I'm trying to make is that we have a city of 15 council districts and commissions with seven appointments. And again, unless this council's willing to establish a policy, for example, that says there should not be two commissioners from one council district, we're never going to start spreading the representation, particularly in these kinds of authorities. And this particular authority does the task of trying to create incentives and provide funding for businesses that would be creating jobs, and that's very important. But again, I just want to make that comment, I have no objections to Mr. Almerez, except that he chose to live in a part of the city that's trying to leave the city, but I would strongly recommend that we support him at this time, being that I've already made my statement public, and in the past it didn't make a difference. Sherman Oaks, oh, okay, I'm glad you recognized that.
Is there any other council member that wishes to be heard at this time? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations, sir, and thank you for your willingness to serve the city.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Forthwith. Next item.
Items number one and two on the regular agenda are items noticed for public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on items one and two? I have no cards, seeing no persons that wish to be heard. The public hearing on items one and two is closed. Is there any council member that wishes to be heard on items one or two? If not, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items.
Note for the record, item number one, the hearing and ordinance will be continued to February 20th. The next items, items number five and 19 through 24 are ordinances. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Well, we have 12 today, I believe we should. You know, why don't we hold them on the desk and see if we get to 12 members?
Items numbers six through 18 on the regular agenda are items noticed for, items for which public hearings have been held.
Mr. Bren, could I call item 11 special?
Special, number 11 by Mr. Hernandez. I do have speakers' cards on item 13, even though I do believe a public hearing was held, but we will call it special as a courtesy. Has it not been held, Mr.?
Actually, is the, there's a communication with the Chair of the committee, there was not a quorum.
There was not a hearing in committee, okay, so we will call 13 special. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on those items? Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Next.
Items number 29 through 45 with the, items number 29 through 45 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, we have cards on 42, so we will call that special. 29 special, any other specials? 29 through 45, colleagues? 29 through 45?
I believe there's an amended motion on item number 45.
Okay, we'll call that one special also. Any other specials, colleagues? Any persons in the audience that want to be heard on those items? Any of those items? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Clerk, what are the balance of the items that we have before us?
31 through 41, 43, 44.
Okay. Would you open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next.
Going back to the matters that have been called special, item number 11 was called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez on item number 11.
Yeah, is anybody from staff here on this item? I think someone's coming up. Is anybody from staff here? Maybe there isn't. Could we hold it, and maybe a staff member could come and report? Is anybody here prepared to report on this item before we vote on it?
Mr. Hernandez, would you like us to hold it on the desk until we get staff here to?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please see if we could get staff here to answer Mr. Hernandez's questions on item number 11? We'll hold it on the desk until that time. Next item.
Item number 13 called special, so the public could address it.
We do have some speakers on item number 13. We have quite a few folks who have listed for general comments and one person against the proposal, two persons against the proposal. So what we will do is that we'd like to hear for the folks against the proposal first, and then we'll call on the individuals for general comments. If you folks could please line up behind the podium as I call your name, if you could make your comments to the point and brief, we would appreciate it. First, Gary Logan, and is it Koga or Koya Tansy? Please come forward behind the podium and introduce yourselves, and then you may begin.
Hi, my name is Gary Logan, and--
Thank you, sir.
I really don't fully understand the proposal that is up, but what I was told is that they want to get rid of certain parts of the HOPWA program, one of them being the STAT program. First, I want to say that being a, let me see, being a person that, first, the program will help. It would help greatly. Being a person that's trying to integrate itself back into the community, the working community, having had dealt with a few major mental health issues, also substance abuse problems, trying to integrate back into the community, I believe that this program will help me greatly. The, I did use this program once before in mid-'90s, and it was very beneficial at the time. As a matter of fact, it helped to the point where I didn't need it for a number of years because of the program. It helped stabilize me at that time. Wow. The, excuse me, the HOPWA program itself has been a great benefit, greatly beneficial to me, because it is difficult, being that this is a community that where we do have to pay our own way. We do have to pay our own way, we have to establish those means to pay our own way. Sometimes the ends don't meet at all, and with that help, it can help connect those two ends to get a person started. I spoke of mental health issues. I'm right now currently in a mental health facility, seeking or receiving help for my mental health issues, and I'm almost completed. I'm almost at the point of transitioning back into the community, and for this program to be stopped, it would handicap me. It would make the transitional period longer, not saying you're responsible for my stress, but it would be much stressful, and I'm really trying to make it an easy, smooth transition. So, wow, I've lost my train of thought here, but I would like to see that the program stays--
Thank you, sir.
--for a number of years, for the people behind me also that are coming in, because that problem is still out there.
Thank you. Mr. Tansy?
Good morning. My name is Roger Tansy, I'm Executive Director of Aid for AIDS. Aid for AIDS has 17 years of experience in providing financial assistance chiefly for housing to low-income people disabled by AIDS. I'd like to echo the past speaker's comments in recommending that you reject the Housing Department recommendation to abolish or severely limit the HOPWA-STAT program. The program presently provides rental assistance to over 3,000 low-income people with AIDS every year. It's a federally funded program, and to accept the Housing Department's recommendations will pretty much throw those people off without any assistance. The proposed solution, Section 8 Housing Certificates, have become pretty much useless because of the high rents. I will simply close with that and thank you all.
Thank you, sir. We now have quite a few individuals for general comments. I'm going to call them all, and if they could please line up behind the podium, it would be appreciated. Deborah Owens, Al L., Darrell Williams, Leela Roberson, Mark Oringer, and John Riley. Ma'am?
Good morning, my name is Deborah Owens, and I feel that he's wrong, because the Section 8 did help me at one time with the HOPWA, and I was homeless, and they helped me get in, pay my rent, turn my light and gas on, whereas I couldn't do that for myself. And right now, I'm in a mental health and substance abuse foundation where I'm just about completing my program too, and I'm getting ready to be transitionalized into HOPWA, you know, contract where they will help me have housing and get me started and back into the community. And I think it's a very good program, and I think you guys should keep it to help people like me get started back on my feet. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Al Pierre L., and I'm a person living with HIV and hepatitis C. The HOPWA program will be very beneficial for me because of my physical condition. I am not able to go out and get per se job because of the medication that I take and the different side effects that I have from my medication. It would be most helpful for people in my condition. I am also living in transitional housing. In order for me to survive on the street as a citizen, I feel that the HOPWA program would be most beneficial for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Leela Roberson, and right now, I'm at Substance Abuse Foundation in Long Beach, and I just want to speak on behalf of people that's living with HIV and AIDS, because I too am living with HIV, and the Lord has blessed me with 11 years. And I've never used this program of HOPWA, but that gives me hope to know that as long as I stay clean and put God first, that something else is out there to help me, and I think that this program should be kept for people like me and the people behind me, you know, and really, it just gives a person strive to know that there will be some help out there for them, so I think that this program should stay. Thank you.
Sir?
Good morning. My name's Mark Oringer. I'm a person living with AIDS. I also want to acknowledge I do work for APLA, but I am here in capacity as a client and a person living with AIDS. I want to comment on the STAT program and make sure that that program stays in place as the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Commission and the H and C and R Committee. This program has been instrumental in putting a roof over my head in the past, and though I have recently gone back to work, having not worked because of AIDS for over six years, I want to make sure that this program stays intact, so if the time comes, God forbid, that I ever have to revert back to it, that this is available to me. I do want to emphasize it does work at a minimal cost. As it's been stated, Section 8, for variable reasons, has not been successful here in the City of Los Angeles. This program has, and even though it has been utilized in the fashion of maybe more of an entitlement program than what it was originally set out to do, it's still important that it remain in place and that whatever waivers are needed from HUD until a feasible, workable program that can work in the city under the present housing conditions can be formulated, that it stay intact, and hopefully you'll take that recommendations. I just want to make sure that the level of services I've gotten through housing specialists in AIDS organizations, and mine being APLA, also stay intact, because that's been very instrumental in making this option available for me in the past. So that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Thank you. My name is John Riley. I'm a person living with HIV and AIDS, Peer Services Coordinator at Project New Hope, and also a co-chair of the California HIV Advocacy Coalition, Southern California Region. I first would like to thank City Council-- Coordinator at Project New Hope, and also a co-chair of the California HIV Advocacy Coalition, Southern California Region. I first would like to thank City Council for designating this item special and to thank them for giving the community an opportunity to give input in lieu of visitors from out of the country participating in today's council meeting. I wanted to speak in support of the amended LA HD RFP as with the adjustments made by the Affordable Housing Commission and the H and CR Committee. But I also would like to impress upon City Council the importance of community input as it was established with the Los Angeles HOPWA Advisory Committee, which has basically been disabled for the past two years. It is very important that that community input be reestablished, that the evolution of the HOPWA program is eyed by people from around the country as very, very well-developed here in Los Angeles until the HOPWA Committee was disabled by the conflict of interest issue. So it is-- I entreat and impress upon the City Council to have the City Attorney's Office make it clear what that means so that the reconstituted committee, if it happens, are clear on what they can and cannot advise to City Council. And so thank you for allowing me to speak to you today.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Good morning, Council members. Robert Martino standing in for Darrell W., and I'm here today to ask on behalf of all people that could not be here today, living with HIV and AIDS, to please allow this program to stay in effect. This is a very much needed program in Los Angeles County and neighboring counties and cities throughout Los Angeles. There are many people that rely on this program. So many people that are on Social Security, that get the bare minimum from Social Security that need this program to make the difference in their housing and in their lives. When you think about someone who gets $700 a month and they do not get HOPWA or they do not have Section 8, and they need to pay $500 a month rent, they need to pay utilities, they need to buy food, what are they left with? Nothing. As a healthcare provider, as a person that has worked for many years in nursing and have dealt with the issue in my own family and my own life, I plead with you today. Hear each one of our requests, that you keep this program active. There are many people in Los Angeles County that rely on this program, and there's many people who would be placed at risk if this program was to fall through the cracks. We need this program. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, when this was in committee, we spent a couple of hours going over the staff report and listened to a lot of the speakers who were here today and discussed many issues, but one of the things that was unanimous, mainly because it was only me-- that helps to make it unanimous-- that was that we continue the short-term rental assistance program that all the individuals here have testified as being such an instrumental part of helping people get back on their feet. If you look at your report from the chair, that being me again, that would be 2A, to continue the short-term rental assistance program with the shallow program component. So I just want to bring it to your attention that we are maintaining this program, and we will continue to maintain the program as long as we feel that it's working in the best interest of the clients, and that is something that we discuss with all the providers, and they are going to work with my office and the department to make sure that this program and other programs that we have for this constituency are doing the best to serve their needs. So I urge an "I" vote on item 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Members of the council, I also wanted to point out, and again, listening to the speakers today, that part of the recommendation is basically a request from HUD, that they basically waive a certain provision in regards to their regulations, because this is a short-term program. It's designed for 21 weeks, and people need to understand that that's part of the recommendations before us. We need that waiver in order to be able to continue the program beyond that 21-week period. And so, again, I also-- I don't sit on the committee, but we'll follow the lead of the chair, who acted as a committee as a whole.
Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on this item? If not, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
That item is approved. Next item.
Item number 29 called special by Councilmember Walters.
Item number 29. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked for this to be called special for the purpose of introducing an amended motion that would allow for the balance-- for the RFP to go forward on this program and continue it until Friday, the designation of allocation of these resources.
Is there any objection to the Councilwoman's motion that we move forward with the RFP today, but the designation of the allocations, we continue that portion of this issue until Friday? Was that an objection or a second? Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Without objection, that will be the order.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number 30 called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Padilla, item number 30 called special.
Simply, Mr. President, for purposes of moving 30-- or 38-- oh, I'm sorry, 30C, the Public Works Report.
You move C, Mr. Padilla? Okay. That item is before us. Is there any council member that wishes to be heard? Mr. Padilla has moved 30C. Okay, Mr. Clerk? Can we hold this on the desk for one moment, Mr. Padilla? Okay, we're going to hold this item on the desk for a moment until a few more council members become comfortable with the item, and then we'll proceed. Okay? Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Number 42. There is a member from the public who wishes to be heard.
Okay, we have item number 42. In fact, we have two cards on file, Stephen Abraham and Stephen Dominiac. Gentlemen?
Thank you to the members of the City Council, Stephen Abraham of Cox Castle and Nicholson, on behalf of Archstone, the developer of this project. We wish to thank the members of the council for their input in creating what we believe is truly a product of quality that will enhance the lives of the members of the community, not merely by providing homes to many of them, but also providing something aesthetically pleasing and of value that will help to develop the entire area, move along the development. We again wish to thank you for the input and for your consideration of the project as it stands before you today.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
I'm Stephen Dominiac with Archstone Communities. I'd like to thank you for consideration of this item, and we look forward to moving ahead with the relocation process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other person in the audience wishing to be heard on item number 42? Seeing that, we will move to council members that wish to speak. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an amendment I brought in to create some corrections to a case that we had had earlier where the report of the council action was different from what we had actually done as verified by the City Attorney and the Clerk in listening to the tape, and also to create some clarity where there was ambiguity as it related to the precise relocation assistance to be given to certain significantly protected group of tenants. And so this is-- everyone is in accord with this. It's been reviewed by the Planning Department, the tenants' organizations, the City Attorney, and we're just putting this forward so the implementation of the relocation assistance can go forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing no council member that wishes to speak, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll, tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
This item is approved forthwith, and forthwith on item number 13 also. Next item.
Item number 45 called special by Councilmember Misakowski for amendment.
Councilwoman, item number 45.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just an initiation of a definitional change to the Hillside ordinance, and the only reason I want to-- I just want to call it special is that the motion makes reference to something called the standard street dimension standard plan, and there's a number there that needs to be corrected. The correct number of the standard street dimension standard plan is S-470-0. So I'd like to make that technical correction.
That's what I thought it was. There's a second. Any objection to the amendment? If not, we have item 45 as amended before us. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
That item is approved. Next. Forthwith on that item.
Mr. President, with respect to item 30 that I respectfully requested that you hold on the desk, may I suggest that we continue it to Friday? There are matters that need to be attended to in the transmittal that will correct the item so that it can be properly disposed of, and with your permission, I would so move.
Is there any objection by any member of the council to continue item 30 until Friday? Seeing no objections, that'll be the order. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
It's February 2nd.
February 2nd.
Item number 11 is on the desk. Councilmember Hernandez called it special.
Is there staff present to answer Mr. Hernandez's questions on item number 11? Has staff arrived? Ah, here comes staff. Mr. Hernandez, if you want to re-articulate your concerns in order that staff could answer, we will proceed.
Well, it's more of a question to-- my understanding that basically us approving this particular transmittal will be setting aside funds, grant funds, to enter into FieldMaker Infrastructure Project in terms of natural gas facilities at some of our Department of Transportation DOT facilities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And my understanding, and again, under the concept of air quality improvements, the DOT facility that I did not see on the list happens to be right next to the 5 freeway on the Mission Road, and it's a new facility, basically a state-of-the-art facility, and I was wondering why it wasn't part of the infrastructure plan.
At this time, there's a station under construction downtown near Philippe's on Alameda.
On Alameda and what?
Alameda near Philippe's Restaurant. I'm not sure the cross-street there. And that's going to be a fast-fill facility, so vehicles will be able to fill up there in about 10 minutes, as opposed to these stations, which are slow-fill or overnight stations.
Right, and that's more the question because in looking at the infrastructure question, what you had on this report was three stations. You didn't share with the rest of us where the rest of them are going, and you were using DOT facilities naturally, which I understood, and that's why I was asking about that DOT facility.
Right. The Department of Transportation is the one that actually puts the vehicles into operation, and they had chosen those three facilities based on the fact that there wasn't a fast-fill facility nearby, so they needed slow-fill capability there.
Uh-huh.
The station in your district that you're referring to, or the parking enforcement yard there, will be able to fuel at the fast-fill station that's under construction there.
Right. It's not in my district. It's in Mr. Pacheco's district. I was just concerned about the air quality that also my district shares.
Right.
So do you have a map that you could share with the rest of us that show where these facilities are going so that we don't ask these kinds of questions in the future?
We are working on a map now. We don't have one today. Well, we're actually undergoing a strategic planning effort to identify where all of future infrastructure shall be placed.
Right, and I know Mr. Ridley Thomas wants to answer the question. My concern, members of council, and I was just reacting to what I saw in the report. It was talking about three facilities, one in South Central, one in Hollywood, and one out in the valley. And what I wanted to do is express an interest in making sure we're developing a full service facility downtown LA, and now I'm here and we are. It's just that the report did not reflect that. And so if we could see that kind of map, I think that would be helpful to all of us.
As soon as we have it, we'll share it with you.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Mr. Hernandez's questions are wholly appropriate, and within a matter of three weeks, the Fuel Infrastructure Report will be backed to the council to answer not only the questions that have been raised by Mr. Hernandez, but more. So the map that is correctly called for will be included in that. This is a part of a more comprehensive effort. It is but a piece, and yet I think each piece has to be looked at against the backdrop of how it impacts other aspects of our efforts to properly build up our infrastructure with respect to alternative fueling stations, how that impacts air quality, what impacts it has in terms of land uses in the respective communities under consideration. With that, Mr. President, as Chair of Environmental Quality, I move the report before you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Is there any other council member that wishes to be heard on this item? Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
That item is approved forthwith. Next.
Not on the regular agenda. There's a special one that was brought in by Councilmember Padilla. Findings need to be made.
Okay, special one. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a motion that's very similar to the motion that we had, I think it was last week or the week before, on the El Salvador earthquake, only this is for the Indian earthquake-- the earthquake in India that happened on Friday, January 26th, and this is also asking the City of Los Angeles to respond with technical assistance. The council need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act.
Okay. We're first going to vote on the findings. So, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on the findings, tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Okay, the item is before us. Now we will vote on the motion itself. Mr. Special one, Mr. Burnson? City of LA offering technical assistance to the government of India in regards to their earthquake disaster. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on special one? Tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
That item is approved forthwith. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, due to a time consideration, namely the urgency of item number 30, I move for reconsideration pursuant to staff having informed us that the deadline is Thursday.
Is there any objection to reconsidering item number 30 in order that we can discuss it today because of a deadline that is pending today? Seeing no objection, item 30 is again before us.
Let me just simply suggest pursuant to item number 30, we adopt C, which is the most recent report. The difficulty we were having is that it did not include an important piece of the action that was taken by the Public Works Committee. And with the chair's permission, I'll simply read that, and it needs to be a part of the record. CLA also recommended adding three additional projects to Attachment A of their November 29, 2000 report. The three projects are Kiwanis Pavilion Project and CD 11 as a watershed project, watershed protection project. Number two is the Sun Valley Watershed Pilot Project as requested by CD 7 and-- Number two is the Sun Valley Watershed Pilot Project as requested by CD 7, and finally, the Los Angeles Constructed Wetlands Feasibility Project, a nonprofit source pollution project in CD 11 as well. Mr. President, members of the council, what's important to note in this connection, as we think about Prop 13, we will have to be particularly aggressive as a city to make sure that our projects are funded in view of the fact that we have not experienced as much success as we would have hoped and certainly as we should deserve to experience. And with that, I would move the report with the amendments to item 30C with the hope that the full council will adopt it accordingly.
Okay, is there any objection to that? Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
I pressed my button. My understanding is this is a first round of awards? And because you just added three projects to the list.
Right.
And some of them were council-requested. We were told that, for example, the Audubon Center up at Debs Park.
Yes.
At the time, it was being considered, it couldn't be put on the list because they didn't have a long-term lease for the city. And now there's a long-term lease for the city. And so we were told we'd have to wait till the next round. I'm trying to figure out, are all these projects in that same light? Or, because we were just basically, because we were told that, we were waiting till the next round. But that center is moving right along, and the only reason we were told it didn't qualify at the time, and this is at the time the list was being, initial list, the one without these amendments was being considered, was because it didn't have that lease agreement in place.
Yes, I think the CLA should come to the table. This is the first round.
Right.
The question, I think, would be, when is the second round? And the project to which Mr. Hernandez is referring, whether it's ready and can qualify now, or if in fact, round two would be a better opportunity for it to succeed? The CLA's office.
And I'm willing just to wait till Friday as long as it can.
No, it has to go.
Okay, okay.
That's why we reconsidered it.
CLA's?
Do we have CLA staff prepared to?
Point of order. Can I just suggest that since there is a time deadline, if Mr. Hernandez is aware of a project that would otherwise qualify and now has its lease in place, that it be added to the list that Mr. Ridley Thomas indicated as a large regional project and move forward?
That would be the Debs Park.
Debs Park.
Mm-hmm. Project.
I have no resistance to that. I don't know if it is wise to do it now or later, and that's why I ask.
See, we were advised it was ready for the second round now because the lease is in place.
Right, I understand.
And at the time.
But there's a strategic question in play, Mr. Hernandez, whether it has a better chance now or if it would be a better opportunity to do it in round two. I don't know the answer to that.
Right, right, right.
Thank you, gentlemen. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Misakowski, or was that just the point of order?
Yeah, it was just my board, and I would just, I would say, let's add it and say, if all the paperwork is, can be processed.
She should come to the desk, Maria? Are you going to come and answer the question?
Yeah. That would help.
Do we have CLA staff prepared to answer some of the council members' concerns?
Right.
Regarding Debs Park as the Prop 13.
Right.
Grant, it's my understanding that the Department of Recreation and Parks was also here to speak on behalf of this issue, identified that that project was not going to be a part of this round of the RFPs, although there will be other opportunities in the spring and also in September.
Right, and the reason they gave us at the time was they hadn't concluded their lease agreement with the Audubon Center that is going in there. Now, that process has been completed.
Mr. Hernandez, have we had Wrexham Parks staff here also? They're welcome to come forward.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking the question, because, see, the Audubon Center has gone through, we have a lot of work we're doing with Debs Park right now. We're putting it all together, and it's right next to the Arroyo, and it's part of an overall watershed project. At the time, we were trying to get it in, we were told that the reason they couldn't get it in is they hadn't finalized a long-term lease with the Audubon Society. That was the reason, Wrexham Parks told us, and they said by the second round, we would have that finalized. What I'm saying today is they got a 30-year lease. It's finalized. And so when I heard there was being amendments as to additional projects being put in place, that's why I asked the question.
Well, Jane Cobb from Recreation and Parks, we will put the project in the second round, which is September, because the timeframe was too short to get it in for this one because the grants are due on Thursday.
Right, and today, we're mending the list to add three projects.
Right.
Isn't that same timeframe applied to them?
No, I think those are for, aren't those projects for this round?
Those projects were already under consideration, and they had been inadvertently left out by the respective departments at the time.
Okay, then I will support what's before us. I'm just trying to explain this because, see, part of our frustration at the time is that Wrexham Parks was basically controlling the process of this lease that we knew they were going to be ultimately giving to the Audubon. And again, they've gone through their efforts of raising over $6 million. The City Council's gone through its efforts of putting over $2 million, and we thought it was an ideal project because its relationship to the Arroyo and that whole issue of the watershed. And so, again, from my perspective, Wrexham Parks was not doing their job, and that has been what I have found at Debs Park in terms of promoting that landmass and its relationship to the Arroyo. And so we've been pushing your buttons to get this stuff done, and here is another example where you weren't thinking in those terms, and now we're dealing with this situation. And I don't have a problem with, because now I have a rational understanding. And basically what that understanding is, Wrexham Parks didn't do their job on my project and didn't do it on others.
I can't.
And so the second round, whether I'm here or not, I expect it to be there.
It will be in the second round. No question.
Thank you.
Is there any other council member that wishes to be heard on this item? Mr. Padilla has moved item 30C, and it has been.
As amended.
As amended? Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item? And tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith. Next, Mr. Clerk?
Items number 5 and 19 through 24 are ordinances. Do you wish to consider those first consideration today, or do you wish to continue the matters?
I believe, do we have 12 members tomorrow?
You should have 12 members tomorrow.
Okay. Why don't? I do believe, however, there may be a memorial service tomorrow at 11 o'clock that maybe many council members may want to attend. Mr. Burnson's going to be bringing a motion in memory of Joe Sorrell's mom, who passed away, and the services are tomorrow morning. So I'm thinking that we either can vote on a first reading today and it'll be continued a week, or we continue it all today to see if we can get 12 tomorrow and dispense with them. So I'm thinking maybe we vote first reading today. I don't believe any of the ordinances.
None of them are urgent.
We can do that. Or we can vote today and it goes for second reading next week, Mr. Burnson? Why don't we do that? Right. Okay, let's continue them a week. Mr. Burnson will withhold, so then it'll be second reading a week from today. Okay, any other items? Mr. Clerk before us?
Now is the time for public comment on non-agenda items.
I have no cards. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on public comment within subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council? Okay, seeing no cards, public comment period is closed. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
The adjourn, mm, the desk is clear.
Very good. We do have adjourning motions. Would the council and the audience please rise? Chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Members of the council, I have two today. First, I would ask that we adjourn in memory of Marie Catherine Dietz. Mrs. Dietz was the wife of Dr. Harry Dietz, resident of Canoga Park, and survived by H. Jeffrey Dietz, who is a physician, Tony M. Dietz, physician Jennifer Dietz Clark, and seven grandchildren, two great-grandchildren. The Dietz family have been very involved in the San Fernando Valley for many, many years, not just in the medical profession, but in community activism. Dr. Dietz was one of my original members of my Citizens Advisory Committees that we started some 22 years ago, and participated for many years, right up until the time that his health no longer permitted. So I would ask that we adjourn in memory of Marie Catherine Dietz. And finally, one with great concern is I would ask that we adjourn in memory of Marion Sorrell, mother of Joe Sorrell. She was 90 years old, beloved family matriarch, predeceased by her one and only true love, Salvatore, cherished mother of Joseph, and adored mother-in-law of Lee, and perhaps the roles that made her happiest, grandma to Steve, Tara Bullock, and Sharon, Matthew Levy, and Joey, Sarah Sorrell, and great-grandma to Kimberly, Christopher, Danny, and Lauren. This is a long thing here, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but she was born in New York and moved to Los Angeles in 1957, and she was executive assistant to Assembly Speaker Jesse Enra for 10 years, for almost 10 years, and she'll be missed by her family. She was well and active until extremely recently, and fortunately, did not have a long-suffering illness, but went at the age of 90. So I would ask, I think the entire council would like to join me on this.
Councilwoman, check.
Yes, I would just like to add a few words because I knew Marion quite well for a very long time. I never knew how old she was. I just learned that now, and she's the same age that my father just turned, 90. That's hard to believe because she was a beautiful woman all the way up to 90, a role model for me in the love she had for her family and her grandchildren. And just this Christmas holiday season, at the party that the Sorrell firm had, there was Marion in her regular, every year, year after year, her seat, her booth, kind of holding court, grinning and smiling and kissing and saying hello. A woman filled with love for everyone.
Any others, Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, I'd also like to wish my condolences to the Sorrell family. I keep on saying mothers are real special. Members of the council, I ask that we adjourn in memory of, basically, a member of my district, Penny Height. And, you know, there was a TV series that we could all relate to called Constituents. We would all identify someone like Penny Height. I met Penny Height when I was first campaigning for the City Council in Pico Union, and she was very adamant about the crime. And this was a woman who basically played a leading role in a very small area of putting together a mass unit, More Advocates for Safe Homes. And Penny Height, on a daily basis, basically worked at a bar, but she was someone who cared a lot about her neighborhood. We opened up a constituency service office on Alvarado, on the 11th and Alvarado. It was a very special place because at one time, Councilwoman Gloria Molina had tried to open one there, and then she closed it down because it was too dangerous. And Penny Height basically worked out of that constituency, constituent service office every day. And she was a strong police volunteer, community volunteer. She was controversial because she had her opinions, and, but she cared a lot about where she lived, and she'll be sorely missed. Penny's basically going to be cremated, and her ashes will be kept by a friend because she didn't have any family members. But I'm sure this is going to be someone who's going to be sorely missed in that particular area of the district.
Thank you. Others, council members? I would like to adjourn in memory of Josephine Ibada, who passed away on January 25th. She was born on March 18th, 1926, here in Los Angeles and was a lifetime resident. She survived by her sons David and Arthur, who is my constituent services aide in our Watts District Office, four sisters, one brother, two grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Seeing no further business before the council, the council is adjourned. Have a good day, everyone.